I call the City Commission Meeting of January 7th to order. We begin tonight's meeting with a invocation by Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, which I will lead us in. If you please rise.
Let us pray. Let there be peace on earth, and let it begin with me. Good and loving God, God of love, you are with us in every transition and change. As we transition into this new year, with excitement and, yes, even nervousness, we recall your deep compassion, presence, and abounding love. We are grateful for this city's council, these great men of God. We are grateful for our city staff, employees, and the citizens of this great city of Boynton Beach. Thank you for the gifts, talents, skills with which you have blessed us. Thank you for the experiences that you have brought us to this moment. Thank you for the work of others that give depth and depth to our own work. Be with us now as we move forward into the new year of 2014, rejoicing with you and supporting one another. We ask this in your holy name. Let the people of God say amen.
I put the nation to the flag of the United States of America and to the record for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like everyone to join me in the brand promise statement? It's time to take a look at Boynton Beach. Grow your family, business, and garden in a cultural mosaic of diverse, affordable neighborhoods. Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here. Here.
Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I do have an addition to the agenda under Consent Agenda. It'll be the last item K. We need to do a red light resolution, R14-009, I believe the number is. If you add that to the consent, it'll be Item K. Also, while you're on consent, I want to pull Item E, like an easy, I, Item I, and Item J. The Commissioners have any corrections, deletions, additions? Hearing none. And a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's show the motion unanimously. We'll go to informational items by members of the City Commission. I'll start with Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Let me get out my calendar, but... It was a good holiday.
(laughing).
It's good to hear, Mike.
Sorry to be the other end.
Yes, I go along with that. It was a great holiday. I got a feeling that I'm gonna get out of here. I really don't have any more to add at this point.
Mr. Merker?
Yes. Um, let's see, where do I want to begin on this? Let's call it reporting in. I met Friday afternoon, December 27th, at 12:15 with Rebecca Shelton and Chris Brown, a principal with RMA Redevelopment Management Association. The subject was this company, RMA, who and what they are, and supposedly how they are here to help amend or work together with the CRA, dealing with the development of One Federal and 500. I was told that they already met with Mayor Jerry Taylor, Commissioner Cassello, and I was the third one. The reason I'm bringing this up, of course, I was told it was only going to be directed to the Commissioners, not any of the CRA citizens. My question is, I don't understand. We've had meetings in which we applauded the CRA, both our director and the staff. And I was told the purpose of this was for this RMA to work with the CRA. I found this confusing because by bringing a third party in, number one, brings extra cost to the city; number two, the applause from us, the Commissioners, and us, the CRA members, again, we applauded our CRA. I find it belittling that they had, I'll use a strong word, the audacity to come forth as if they were something wonderful. They're involved with the city of West Palm, where if you read the papers, there's question marks about this company. I think it's important that we, the Commissioners, who get the chance, who have gotten the chance, pardon me, to speak to RMA, and again, I don't understand where this woman, who I know, Rebecca Shelton, is a participant in this. That's not her profession, as far as I know. I would like comments from the mayor and Commissioner, what their feelings are, what is the purpose of this? I feel it's important that the citizens of Boynton Beach, after the praise that the CRA and the director has received over the past couple of weeks, why are we thinking of bringing this group in? I think it's essential. I think just as we applauded our City Commissioner and the staff that works under her, and we applauded the CRA and the staff that works under her, I'm trying to understand the logic why we need this third party. So, as I said, I'm reporting in. It was on December 27th that I met with Rebecca Shelton and Chris Brown, and I thank you.
I'd be glad to address that for you. I don't know why, I guess I don't quite understand your confusion. Often, many businessmen call and ask to meet with me, and I'll meet with anybody who wants to meet me and talk about business. And Chris Brown, who happened, I had known back in the early '90s, he was the CRA Director for Delray, but he left that many years ago, and so I didn't know what he wanted to talk about. But when I did sit down and talk with him, I found out that he had been following the stories in the paper about the Bank of America property, and just wanted to know if there, he wanted to know if we wanted, if he can anyway could help us to go out and solicit somebody for that property. I informed him that we already have a CRA that does that, and then at that meeting, I didn't know what he had gone on to, but I found out that he was working with the CRA that also runs West Palm Beach and Pompano, and they're working for Green Acres, and I think they were trying to just solicit new business. So I told him, I wasn't interested, that basically ended that conversation because we already have a CRA, we're working at it, and I'm not looking on bringing any other CRA in. We have a good one with Vivian Brooks in our group, I think they're doing a good job. So, but, you know, it was just a business meeting. I listened to hear what he had to say, and basically told him that we already got our ducks in a row here. So, I don't know if that puts your mind at ease, but that's where it's at.
Well, the reason it was a question was because of that, and I'm very glad to hear from you, Mayor, that you also applaud the CRA and their staff, and quote-unquote, you right now, there is no need for a third party. So, thank you for clearing that up and spelling it out.
Yeah, I don't know. Anybody considering that, I haven't heard of it.
Heard of what?
Of anybody considering a third party coming in.
Well, that's what they are. If you have a CRA and you bring in a third party, that supposedly, excuse me, and what they said was supposedly to work with the CRA, they're not doing it for their health, they're not doing it for fun, they're an extra expense.
Well, that's just their proposal, like, you know, nobody here suggests that we do that, yeah.
Well, we're, you and I are agreeing now. We don't need them, that's great.
Okay.
Okay, that's simple.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Cassello?
I'd just like to say, I don't know where the confusion is. It was strictly an informational-type meeting that we had, and at no time did we ever discuss of MRA coming in here and taking over our CRA. That was never discussed at any time during that discussion, so I don't know where that confusion comes from. But I'd like to start off by saying that I wish everybody a happy, healthy, prosperous New Year to everybody out there, and let this one be a great one, 2014. And I'd just like to give a shout-out to the Fire Department's Pancake Breakfast that's coming the 12th of this month. Chief Carter out there and his men, they make some of the best pancakes in South Florida, and the donations are going to a good cause, it's going to Jeffrey, I forget his last name, Kim Butler. Thank you so much. Kim Barker's family, it's for a good cause, it's $5 for adults, $1 for our 10 years and younger, and it's all-you-can-eat. We have some eggs, sausage, juice, you name it, it's there. It's gonna be held at Station 3, which is on the corner of Minor and Congress Road, so between 8 and 11. So please, try to make an effort to get out there and help for a good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been to a lot of them, they're great, and you get a lot to eat.
Yeah.
I don't have anything either, just to concur with Commissioner Cassello, wishing everybody a healthy and happy New Year as we move into the new year. Look for some good things to happen this year in Boynton Beach. Okay, back to Vice Mayor Hay, I believe you had an announcement.
Yeah, I just got some papers all stacked up here together, couldn't find them at the time. But anyway, just to echo what Commissioner Cassello was saying in memory of Jeffrey Kabachar.
Kim Barker.
Kim Butler, Kim Butler. Firefighter #113 was his number, and proceeds will go to the family. The adults are $5, and kids under 10 would be $1, and of course, kids under 3 will eat free. And that would be January the 12th, like he said, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Fire Station #3, 3501 North Congress Avenue. All-you-can-eat pancake breakfast, come out, it's a worthy cause. The other item that I wanted to mention that I didn't, couple items, I did attend the shop for a cop, I don't think we met since we had that down at Walmart, that was a tremendous affair. Each year, it is a great, great, great effort. You can't beat the smiles on those kids when they find out how much money they have to spend. But more so than that, it's a lesson in, when they go in with that money, that $100, they pick out what they want, but they cannot go over that amount. And so they're in there figuring, calculating, and I remember the year that I did, last year, the kid that I had, I did too, he put things back, okay, because it was too much. He didn't want to spend all his money on one item, so he broke it up. And the thing that really touched my heart was the other young lady that I had, she had everything for her family, she had nothing for herself, a brother, a sister, and a dad and a mom. And I said, "Aren't you gonna get yourself something?" "Oh, yeah, okay, I'll get myself something." But it was really touching to see these elementary kids thinking about others and their families rather than themselves. Great lesson, guys, you're doing a great job. Chief, keep up the good works. Job catch. The last one I want to really push is Let's Move Boynton. This is a county-wide challenge that I opened my mouth last year or so, and we're in competition with West Palm Beach. But this particular Let's Move Boynton, it has begun, is being produced by the Palm Healthcare Foundation. And we here in the city are encouraging all residents, all residents, to participate on Team Boynton by logging in the minutes that you exercise this month on the city's webpage, on the city's website, and that's www-boynton-beach.org. Now, any type of exercise can be included when you log in. It could be walking, running, biking, tennis, basketball, or any kind of fitness class. So if you want to join a team, you can come to City Hall on tomorrow, starting Wednesday, at noon or 1:00 p.m. And you can walk an hour with our employees. Our employees are signing up like crazy, they're gonna be walking from City Hall down to the senior citizen center.
Senior center.
Senior center, and back. And that should take about 45 minutes. But we're moving Boynton, and they will even hook you up with a T-shirt. So, and who knows, you might even win a raffle ticket. We're having raffles and everything, so it's gonna be a great time. We are the reigning champs. We kicked butt last year. West Palm didn't come close to us, and we want to make sure it happens again. So we want to retain that title this year. So I'm encouraging the city manager, and I'm putting out the challenge to all the Commissioners and whoever else wants to join us, and so we can...
I'm wearing my pedometer.
All right.
Get my activity points.
Very good, very good. So, we're not gonna let them win. We're gonna, we're gonna win this again. So, but if you have any questions, or you need more details, please call the city manager's office, and she will make sure that you get all the details to participate in this. But I truly believe that healthy employees is more productive in terms of they're producing more work, and the sick time is less. So, there are some benefits here, but more importantly to me, I'm on bragging rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
If I just may add to that, I can tell the people out there that the operation of a TV remote does not count as minutes towards the thing. I was disqualified.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, one addition is, I'd just like to say, I haven't met with anybody for, been contacted or met with anybody from RMA.
Thank you. The, and that will go now to announcements, community special events, and presentations. First one will be, if we have some Parks and Rec, the announcement of the Bark in the Park event. Good evening.
Good evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Mary DeGraff from Wright Recreation and Parks Department, on behalf of Wiley Majors, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here this evening to share with you some exciting news and information about our upcoming Bark in the Park event. This is an event that will be held at Pence Park on Saturday, January 18th, and Pence Park is located at 604th Street. And for those of you that needs directions to get there, if you go straight down Seacrest Boulevard to 5th, you can make a left turn, go over the tracks, and the park is right there. And the purpose of this event is to bring the families and friends and their dogs together to enjoy a social gathering and have some wholesome outdoor fun. Our activities include a K-9 demonstration by our very own Boynton Beach Police Department, a kids' art zone, a doggy fashion show and contest, a Dr. Dog Animal Rescue presentation, the biggest and smallest contest, six on-site vendors, prizes, and snacks. Now, dog owners are legally responsible for making sure that any injuries or cause you're responsible for. And our dogs must be properly licensed, inoculated, which is, they have to have their immunizations up to date, they have to be healthy, on a leash, and inside the park during the event at all times. They must also wear their collars and ID tags at all times during the event. For any additional information concerning this event, you can contact any Parks and Recreation facility. Staff will be on-site to monitor the event and to maintain the safety of all patrons. And dog owners, you're only allowed to bring two dogs, only two dogs. So staff will be there to make sure they're monitored and keeping order there. I also brought with me this evening some additional flyers, a Bark in the Park flyer, they're on the back table, located in the back of the chambers, and I truly look forward to seeing you there. So come on out, bring your animals, and have a barking good time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Now, if Mr. Harry Meeks and Mr. Michael Norwood would join me down at the podium, I want to do a presentation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, right there, here.
Whereas the significant contributions made by the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. are recognized nationwide, and that the 3rd Monday of January has been established as a national holiday in commemoration of Dr. King's birthday, January 15th, 1929. Whereas Dr. King dedicated his life so that all Americans may enjoy the freedoms guaranteed every citizen under the Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Committee of Boynton Beach, which combines numerous community organizations and municipalities, is playing a major role in the coordination of observances of this day by offering a variety of historical and cultural programs through the city. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of Thor invested in me as Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim January 20th, 2014, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, and call upon all citizens to rededicate themselves to advancing the cause of brotherhood and sisterhood among all people. The witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 7th day of January 2014. Mr. Meeks, this is, I'll present to you, and if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
We're invited, all of you, and I see a lot of familiar faces up here that always come out of March with us. We're gonna have the march on the 20th. We have the march on the 20th, always at Railroad Avenue and MLK Boulevard. We'll march down, like we always, same route, same route. You will be getting further information, flyers or information by email from our committee. So thank you again for this.
Okay, that takes us to public audience. Speakers who would like to address the Commission on Items Not on the Agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and try to make your comments in a three-minute time period.
Thank you. Davy Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. Mr. Meeks, before you leave, when is the banquet? You didn't tell us when the banquet was.
Sunday, the 12th, this Sunday.
Where? Very good.
Benvenuto's. At time, 6:30. 6:30, Benvenuto's, 12th of January, which is this coming Sunday. Thank you.
Okay. Before I start, for the Consent Agenda, you did not pull Item H, which I would have liked to have commented on. Procedurally, are you allowed to pull that now, if we're public comment?
Anyone on the Commission wish to pull Item H?
Mr. Mayor, at the time the Consent Agenda comes up for consideration, you can then pull any items that you want to pull. That would be the appropriate time to do it.
Okay, thank you. We'll do it then.
Thank you very much. It's my feeling that members of the Commission should read the backup material for each meeting. It's my opinion and feeling that members of the Commission should afford other members the respect they deserve, on and off the dais. What members of the Commission should not do is interject themselves into the political races of other Commissioners by attempting to recruit people to run against them. It's my understanding from several sources that before the new year, Commissioner Merker did just that. He met with Don Scantlin, a former two-time loser in District 4, asking him to run against Commissioner Cassello. Much to Mr. Scantlin's credit, he declined. And let me state without hesitation, most assuredly and indubitably, that I have not agreed with Commissioner Cassello on some of his opinions and votes. I am just fundamentally and philosophically disagree with any such attempt at involvement. And Commissioner Merker, as a professed student of history, let me quote from Thomas Jefferson, "Whenever a man casts a longing eye on political office, a rottenness begins in his conduct." Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you for giving me the compliment regarding history. If you know history, there's been the Federalist Party, the Whig Party, several satellite parties that's tried to be created, known as third parties. The wonderful thing about our country is the fact that we can back, vote for, or against someone. And the position I have, just like you can have when you vote or participate, like you've backed Mayor Jerry Taylor, I have, and so does Commissioner Cassello, have the right to support or not to support the candidate. And the idea that you question that a citizen can ask or someone else to run, that's not American? The idea that you find someone that goes along with your thought process to push forth either development or education is a plus. So I find your statement political, because you've been a hatchet man before, and it seems like you're starting now, and that's okay. But the idea of someone supporting or not supporting someone is the American way, and if Mr. Cassello wins again, Commissioner, I'm sorry, kudos to him. But the idea that you bring forth that someone can support or not support someone is ludicrous, ridiculous, and plainly, pardon my language, stupid.
Good evening, next.
Good evening. My name is Willie Caesar. My address is 712 East Shadow Lane Boulevard, Delray Beach. I have a barbecue business where I cook over on Federal Highway, 2015 South Federal Highway, in the parking lot of my church every Saturday. One day I was cooking, and one of the code enforcements came up and told me that I can no longer cook at the church, and what I need to do is go see the city. So I set up a meeting, I had a meeting with the city manager, the vice mayor, the head of the code department, head of building, and we had a meeting, and they told me that even though I'm a, I just have a grill on the side of the road, I would be considered a food truck. So I had to go under food truck guidelines. So they gave me information that I needed, and they told me in a couple weeks they'll call me back, because they didn't have all the guidelines in place. Well, I never got that call, so I came back and got the information that I thought I needed. I filled it out, turned the information in, and they told me that, you know, you can go ahead and cook, and we'll let you know once you finish this paperwork, what's next. So I cooked the next week, and it was fine. Then the following week, the code enforcement came back and said I couldn't cook anymore. And I was like, "What's the problem?" They was like, "We just told you you can cook for that week." Well, they didn't say that, they said, "I can cook until I get everything done." I paid the fees, I turned in all the paperwork, and it's like, every time I turn in something, the next week, I get more paperwork. It's never like, this is all you need. It's like, every time I do one thing, it's another thing. And I actually overpaid for the fees, and I didn't get a refund. They just told me, "Well, this paper, we forgot to give you." So I came back the next week, I filled out that paper. I thought I was done. Then I get a phone call saying that I have to do a site permit, or whatever. I said, "Okay, well, I'm trying to do what the city asked me to do, send me that." That was like 12 pages long, they wanted me to do that. So it was like, I'm trying to work with the city, I'm not trying to fight with the city. I'm a teacher, I'm a mentor to a lot of kids, work in my church, I do giveaways, I gave away 350 meals Thanksgiving, and I picked seven families for Christmas, where I gave them all their Christmas gifts. I gave away 200 book bags, back-to-school giveaway. I do all this stuff in the community. I do all this stuff in the community and I'm just trying to work with the community and run a business, you know? And this business, this is the only job my wife has. She's having the job. One of my workers, this is his only job. He's a single man trying to raise his daughter and we're just trying to do the right thing. But I just need to know what do I need to do to run this business right? Because every week it's like you're making up rules as it goes on. And I'm willing to apply and do whatever you guys want me to do. I just want to run a legit business, you know, and most of the proceeds go to the church anyway.
Let me tell you, I'm really glad you're bringing this to my attention because I have a very strong feeling here that I think I've established in this city, which I'm upset to hear this because I believe in one-stop processing for businessmen. You should come in and tell us what you want to do and you should get all the information right there, right up front. I know you told me you didn't get it, so that really concerns me. So I can, I tell you, we will look into this. We will get back to you. I'll work with the city manager on this. We'll find out what the deal is, but you should know everything that needs to be done right up front. I call it one-stop processing. You shouldn't have to be coming back and forth like a yo-yo every time there's another piece of paper.
It's been going on for three months.
Okay, well, it'll be taken care of, I guarantee you. We'll look into it and I'll get, we'll get back to you and I'll make it happen, see what happens, what you need.
In the meantime, since they cashed the checks and they have the money, and is there any way I can continue to cook until the process is done? Since I started the process, I'm cooperating, I'm doing everything you asked me to do. And like two weeks ago, the police came and took pictures of me like I was a criminal, took pictures of my family, wrote a report. I got the police report, you know? And I'm like, where's the police when I do the giveaways?
The city commission doesn't have the authority to grant you the right to cook or not to cook. The city manager will get with you, as the mayor said, and provide you with the information that you need to see if you can operate legally.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get right on that. Okay, we have your contact information, right?
We've been in continued communications with Mr. Caesar.
Yes. I've been working with Bill Caesar on this and our first meeting, we told him basically that he was a guinea pig because we're trying to get what the rules are and what the policies are in place. And he's absolutely correct. Every time he goes to one, completes one process, another one comes up and it's new to him and to the staff. So it's a matter of getting at the table now. I just talked with the city manager yesterday about this very thing. And we're at the point now that we're ready to call you back in for a second meeting to sit down and see where we are, what we need to go, what the next step is to allow you to operate. So it's not being overlooked, okay? So I just want to make sure that the mayor and the rest of you know that I have been working with Bill and he's been calling me and we've been working things out, but it seems like at no fault of the city at this point. I think you went as high as the national, didn't you?
Yeah.
And they told him that he needed to have somebody come down and look at his grill and make sure his UL approves or some kind of stuff like that. And he had to be on a one ACO, all these kinds of things that come up either from the national, the state, or the county. And it's just been back and forth. So I would like to complete working with Bill Caesar and the city manager and our staff to really come up with this. Meantime, you're not in business and you can't sell, so hopefully we can work something out there. But the, where we go from this point is to get back with that committee, let's work something out, okay, so that you can continue, we can continue to get that policy. Because after you, the rest of them are going to have to follow whatever procedure we come up with. This is new to us. Right, that's what I was told. Now like, nobody's going to do what I've done. Nobody's going to make, I'm like taking off work, me and, it's been like over three months. No, nobody's going to go through all that just to cook, you know? But, you know, that's what I love to do and I love giving back and love helping the community and doing things and just, and by cooking it helps me to give away and to do things for the kids and do things in the community.
The, I just, I guess I'm, what comes to my mind is there was a, also was a barbecue place, a grill place, right on Federal Highway, the little drive-through restaurant there on Federal, South Ocean. They had a grill out there and we went through this with them. So I don't know that this is all completely new unless it's because we're putting it under this truck shop thing now. That's what's new. So if that's all going under that, that's what's new. But, you know, as we're saying, we're talking about a business that's depending on a weekly production, so we need to step it up here and see if we can get this moving.
Mayor, the hangup, and we'll provide a full report to the commission. It's not with meeting the city requirements at this point, but it's meeting, the Palm Beach County Health Department is requiring certain standards to be met for the barbecue grill itself and meeting fire standards. He's serving food to the public. It's a public health and welfare issue. We have provided as much information as we know. We don't regulate that ourselves and are helping, doing what we can to help Mr. Caesar get through this. And it's a little more complicated than what we're hearing tonight. There's a much more, he's gone through a lot more than that actually, even with some of the regulations. Not so much city imposed as county health issues because it's a food service to the public. So we're going to continue to work with them and help them get through this.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Wayne Barton. I'm from Boca Ritz Home. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Caesar. He asked me to come to support him. And all I want to say to the city commission of Boynton Beach, if you guys would make a real commitment to Mr. Caesar, he needs your support. He truly needs your support. He has appealed for my help and asked for my assistance. Yes, I'm not a resident of Boynton, but I'm throughout the county as a community leader and that's why I come before you today, to ask for your support for a businessman who is trying to do the right things. And he can't do the right things without the support of the city manager and perhaps the commissioners in that district. If you would, if you would very much, I appeal to you, if you would assist him in his desire to be a business owner. There's other vendors around Boynton Beach. I don't know if the criteria is the same or is different, whatever it is, let's see if we can pull together as a community and support a man who's out here doing the right things. There's so many young men his age out there doing the wrong things and we know who they are, we know where they are. Here's a gentleman who's trying to do the right things. This is the guy you want to get behind and support. This is what I believe in, supporting the kids, supporting the community. And you guys got a great community here. I was here one weekend, I had the opportunity to go up on Cherry Hill and give away 176,000 pounds of food to needy families. And your police department came by to support me. And they took money out of their own personal pockets and made contributions to support my cause. This is why I'm here, because I know the city of Boynton Beach, this needs to fall upon the right ears and that it get taken care of. I know how you run this city. Again, help Mr. Caesar if you would. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input, Ms. Barton. I'm very familiar with your work in the county and I commend you for the different things you've taken on. Appreciate it and we'll do what we can to help Mr. Caesar. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Peter Blas, Israeli Army veteran, actually. 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. To begin with, I also want to really ask all of you to help Mr. Caesar. This city has a heart and I can sense the heart in you and I know that he will be able to cook and to help the community. So in my heart, there is no question. Once in a while, you know, the county comes in and does some pretty strange things or tries to do strange things in our city, but that's one reason to keep this city cohesive. That's one of the reasons we have our own police department and not the sheriff here. I think we need to keep some integrity and independence of this city. As you know, and Mr. Merker knows that too, there is two people from District 1 running for mayor. I am also running for mayor and we were somehow divided between District 1 and mayor. I'm glad that District 1 is very strongly represented this year. We had no representation for a long time and I think we're doing quite a job. I just came back from Peru, as most of you know, my wife is in Peru and I go there quite often. I feel that at least a section of Lima called Surco will easily become a sister city to Boynton. It's a very beautiful place and Mr. Delgado is running to be mayor of that section. He became a good friend, so we talked about Boynton having some friendship with Peru. I also need to give you an update. As you all may realize, I work every day to create the University of Boynton. At this point, we have close to 40 students. We meet informally in a restaurant or we meet in the gym, wherever we can talk. This building, you know which one I'm talking about, is just waiting to become university. I think that, I was told it's being inspected once a year. It's quite a dangerous building to go into. I was going to suggest to Chief Carter that the next time they go in, they should wear oxygen. It is becoming quite tricky to go in there. They only go in once a year, so the building, you know, needs some decisions. One idea that we are working on, and I would like for you to pay close attention, it's very much high-tech. We are the closest point to the Gulf Stream and there is tremendous energy in the Gulf Stream. Together with top electrical engineers in the country and with FAU, we are designing a system to obtain energy by putting turbines in the Gulf Stream and feeding our city and the neighborhood with it. This is a truly exciting idea and you will be hearing more about that. Otherwise, I'll just tell you my research on earthquakes continues and God bless you and God bless Boynton Beach. Good to be back.
Thank you.
Oh, and the most important thing, 24/7 police station open now. Let's give Chief Katz a big hand. Wonderful. Thank you.
We agree. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lori Wilkinson. I'm at 2458 Southwest Cranbrook Drive. This is Megan. And I would like to, first of all, ask you, since I know you guys have all the power vested in yourselves, to please talk to whoever's in charge of this polar vortex, because I'm from Florida and I can't do this weather. This is just not good for me, so I've been bundled all day. I'm actually coming tonight before you again. I know it's been a little while since we see each other, but to remind you that in a month, a month from tomorrow actually, we have the Second Annual Barrier Free 5K coming up at the Barrier Free Park on Congress Avenue. This is an event that's going to help us purchase more playground equipment for a park that is open to people of all abilities. Wheelchairs, walkers, deaf people, blind people, people with autism, and of course, children that are typically developing as well. So my family goes there quite a bit. We love the place and there's a lot going on. We've got a walk, a run, a wheelchair division, a kids' race, and I know you guys have been building some teams here at the city, so I hope everybody is getting on board if you haven't already. You can go to the boyntonfoundation.org website or you can go to rapb.com/5k, which is the Realtors Association of the Palm Beaches. They are one of our cosponsors. And so we're very, very pleased to be doing this for the second year. It's only getting better from here. Help us raise some money for a good cause, for some extra playground equipment for a great park. Megan, what do you like most about the park?
The red spinning thing that goes really, really fast and that makes, and this is all I like, makes me and my friends, I always do in there. There's mostly in the splash pad that's there, you get to go there and make stuff. And there's swings, different kinds of swings that you can do that's very, very fun.
Yep, and there are different kinds of swings because they're for special needs kids too, right? Some of the kids, like the school I teach at, that have wheelchairs and things like that, they have full-body swings so they can control their trunk when they're there. That's what she means by different swings, right? All right, well, thank you guys and Happy New Year.
Bye-bye.
Megan, we want to thank you for making, Megan, we want to thank you for making your comments in three minutes.
You're watching, you're watching.
Take care. Anyone else wish to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public audience and move administratively. There are no appointments to be made this evening. We'll go to item B, which is consider areas of study for the Financial Advisory Committee for the upcoming year. In the backup, you have some, would you like to address the commission? Come on, either place.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Grant, 136 Northeast 3rd Avenue. I'm the newly-appointed chairman of the Financial Advisory Committee. I don't know if you've known this, but the Financial Advisory Committee is completely new from the original Financial Advisory Committee. And so anything that has happened from 2012 and before, we are unaware of it. From what I've been told from Don Scantlin, our previous chairman, is that the whole point of the committee was help cost, to cost cuts, no, to cut costs for the city because of the great recession that we had. From the statistical models that we've seen is that the tax and revenue basis for Boynton Beach is now increasing. And so cost cutting is not necessarily the main purpose of the Financial Advisory Committee. And so what we're trying to do is to figure out, what would you guys like, what would you like us to do? I received an email from Mike Fitzpatrick regarding his suggestion to create a nonprofit, an umbrella organization for nonprofits in the city to conduct business. That's something that I guess we could look into. What our main goal right now is that, you know, we're going to, to have, the main thing that we have is a city survey. And so what we're going to try and do is use the city survey to ask the city, the residents and the business owners what they would like Boynton Beach to do to better itself. And, you know, we've been talking over, and one of the things that we've been talking over at the committee meetings is to how to use Boynton Beach's resources for its best use, dealing with any vacant land, vacant properties, and we've also been talking about alternative energies as, you know, revenue sources for the city. But as we stand right now is we have like 10 different items to look at, whereas when the committee started, there was 60. And we just need to know, what would you like us to do?
Commissioner Fitzpatrick, do you want to elaborate on your suggestions a little bit?
Sure. My experience from this came about 15 years ago when I was Chair of the Kids Kingdom and we, the first thing to do when you were trying to raise money was, you know, be able to collect donations and everybody needed nonprofit. It was very hard for the, for the committee to find a nonprofit organization because I worked on like five or six other leatherous playgrounds before that to learn how to be a project manager for the playground. And I noticed that was one of the main issues, like in Delray, they linked up with the J.C.'s. And, but there was a big complaint that after a while, after they collected tens of thousands of dollars, the J.C.'s began to regard it as their money. So it was like wanting to avoid that, so we linked up with the city. Well, it turned, the city of Boynton Beach. Well, it turned out the city of Boynton Beach was worse than the J.C.'s about once the money got in the coffers that it was their money. But they knew it wasn't their money, but they were very reluctant to, you know, do anything that could be done quickly because they're concerned about how it looked as far as if there was any, you know, misappropriation of funds. So it really didn't work out. So, and I understand completely of the city's position, so I was thinking that sometimes it would be nice if there was a foundation that would already have all the paperwork set up. So then you could, then if an organization came in like for raising money for Jeff Timbacher, well, there's the, the fire department benevolent association and nonprofits stepping up to play for that. But what if he wasn't a firefighter? Who would? And maybe if some neighbors wanted to get together, but how would they do it? So if there was an umbrella organization, we could vet various short-lived nonprofit groups, then they could move along fairly quickly and devote most of their energy to volunteer efforts instead of trying to go through all the paperwork. So that was kind of my basic thought and I don't know if it really applies to this committee. I mean, if it doesn't, then, you know, when I'm finished with school, I might bring it up again, you know, six or seven months. But I just, it seemed close enough that I thought I'd throw it in the mix. If it doesn't fit and it's, you know, it's up to the rest of the commission if they don't want to task. don't want to task this, or if the members of the advisory committee doesn't feel it fits their, their area of expertise, I, you know, I don't have a problem with if it's, nothing happens right now, but I just, it seemed, you know, like 80% close enough, I thought I'd throw it out there. If it doesn't stick to the wall, I'm, I'm not going to be upset.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have any thoughts on that?
Has, has the Finance Committee, have they had a chance to look at Commissioner Fitzpatrick's proposal?
Uh, no. I've got it this morning.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah, maybe you can take it back to your committee and take a look at it and see, see whether you think it's something your committee would want to get involved in or is under your, under your purview or not, and get back to us with that. At least that one. Okay. You haven't a chance to look at it either.
And that's good, that you got, go back and study. But my initial interpretation about the Financial Advisory Committee was one of advice only and not duties and responsibilities and activities that they would have to perform for outside people. So, at this point, unless you guys come back and, and help me out here, I don't see it being a good match at this point in time that you guys take on that responsibility. But certainly, like Commissioner Fitzpatrick was saying, I'll just throw it out there and if it sticks, fine. You guys want to do that, I'll support you. But that, that's not my initial identification of what you guys was organized to do.
Well, like I said before, the purpose of the committee was to help the city cut costs. And now that that is no longer necessary because of the cut, the costs that we've already cut, we may need to do our, you know, change our bylaws so we are allowed to do other things to help the city. We are a group of volunteers that our main goal is just to help you, the city commissioners, you know, give you more tools and resources to make your decisions easier. One of the things that I was, wanted to know if it was possible for our city survey, we normally have low numbers compared to our city size. We wanted, I wanted to know if it's able to do a raffle where, you know, where people who fill out the city survey can win a gift card or a dinner, maybe with one of the commissioners or the mayor, just so that, you know, we have more interest filling out the survey. And so, I don't know if that's legal or not.
Got a question to the city attorney's office?
Yes, it is.
Oh, and by the way, I'm David Tolstus, Assistant City Attorney. You know, that would be an issue that we would have to research seriously. There are very, various statutory issues in the state statute as well as the Palm Beach County Code of Ethics issues that may arise in that kind of situation.
Okay. I, well, I, just following up on what the Vice Mayor said, really, your committee was to advise the, the commission on financial matters, and that's kind of what we established you for. So, is my thinking on this would be that your committee would just look at that and come back and say to the commission that you think that might be something the commission should move forward on as far as forming a foundation like he's, as he's suggesting, or not to do that, you know? So, that basically what it is, asking your advice on that. Just take a look at it and see what you think.
The different tax codes.
Right. See what you think about it. Just give us your advice. One of the things that did catch my eye, though, is that I thought, what I think, what I'd see is a review vacant buildings and land and their potential uses. I'd be interested in that if you guys could take that on.
Okay, absolutely.
That'd be a biggie, I think. How about anybody else? Some of the other ones was evaluate energy sources for the city and potential funding? And if they think they ought to go into that?
I think that they should take it back, study it for a while, come back and see what they can and can't do, and then we'll get legal opinions to see if that's the direction we, you know, that we can even go in. They all sound good to me, basically, at this point, but, you know, what their, if their function is the advisory committee, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes.
I also feel that maybe they could work in conjunction with the city staff, talking about the city services survey, because I'm thinking in terms of the various committees that we have in the city, and like tonight, we don't have the first applicant. And maybe some kind of way, I know committees and services can be two separate things, but at the same time, they can cohabitate. So, what I'm thinking is that if you would work with the city staff to determine those city services and maybe somehow work together to eliminate or add or promote or market or something for our committees.
Uh, yeah. I don't know of any other committee or, that has a city survey, so, you know, we have the ability to talk directly to the, the residents and the business owners, and so, we can be the liaison between the city and what they need and what their suggestions are, and then bring it to the residents and the business owners. And that's something that we would probably, would like to do.
And making sure we don't duplicate services too.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's the other thing that we were working on last year is, you know, ways to, you know, reduce costs for city services.
If I may, and I wanted to share with Mr. Grant, this is Eleanor Crusell, our Communications Manager, has now come aboard and has been here for, probably feels like years for her, but not, not quite a year yet. And our use of social media has just exponentially grown. Our presence on Facebook has grown exponentially as well. And I think, I would encourage you to reach out to her in terms of the survey itself. Let her take a look at it, give you guys some advice on it as well. And then also, we will pound it out on our social medias with, between our police department, recreation. I think we'll be able to do a lot more this year with getting the word out to folks with Twitter and the whole thing that we didn't, we weren't doing so much last year.
How do you spell her last name?
Crusell. Just call the city manager's office. 742-6010. We'll, we'll help, and I think that'll really help get some, because typically, we're only getting about 150 responses to the survey, and we work with, we'll work again with the chamber and the CRA, and see what we can, if we can engage our local businesses a little bit more and help spread that out as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Give you some direction?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, item three is evaluate alternative energy sources for city buildings, potential funding. I'd just like to, you know, if Crease would like to say, I think that's kind of been covered already, has it not? Or no? With the, you know, climate committee and stuff like that? No, if not, I, you know, it's fine, but I thought it was already been done. If it doesn't fit it, then, I mean, I'm just trying not duplicate.
Crease is your Assistant City Manager. Alternative energy sources is something that we have definitely identified in the Climate Action Plan. At this point in time, it is not an implementation action item. We have done some in the city. We have put solar panels at Fire Station Five. We have wind turbines out at what's affectionately been known as Pete's Pond. We're looking at putting more wind turbines out at the Barrier Free Park in that retention pond eventually. But it's not been a focus. We use the Energy Block Grant money to put the solar panels up. It's something that I would be open to getting more information regarding if there's cost efficiencies that will be produced by the city putting more alternative energy sources into our organization. So, from the Climate Action Plan standpoint, I would be very happy to hear anything that the committee might come up with.
Okay. You want to take that back to your committee, too?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What was, what was your name?
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. And is there a motion to pull item H? Because I already pulled E, I, and J.
Motion to pull.
Second.
No motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Okay, the first one that was pulled was item E, approve the Information Technology Services Department 2013 70 Strategic Plan. Pulled that because I think ITT want to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John McNally. I'm the manager of the Information Technology Services Department. And basically, just a brief presentation on the, the strategic plan that's up for your review and approval as somewhat of a way to educate you and inform you of the status of our technology within the city and some of the future needs that we'll have moving forward. So, without a plan, we really don't know where we're going to be going or at the end of it, whether we've gotten there or not. So, we see the need for a strategic plan. Enables us to outline the current state of our technology and giving us somewhat of an accurate inventory of the technology used within the city. Helps us define the, the short and long-term needs of the different departments and helps us prioritize those, those needs as we move forward. It helps us guide upcoming budgetary considerations and, which allows us to educate you and get you prepared for some of those, those budget items in the future workshops, and provides us with a framework for future technology decisions, giving us somewhat of that roadmap that, by which we can follow. The process we used, we basically take a look at any previous plan that was in place. For us this year, it was kind of easy, or maybe it was a little difficult. We didn't have a plan. A plan hasn't been done for quite a few years, so took it upon ourselves to, to put one in place. We reviewed external environments to see what best practices were out there with other municipalities, other technology organizations, sort of model ours somewhat after best practices, as I mentioned. We examined current technology trends, keeping abreast of changes in technology and seeing if those, those changes or those systems, technologies would be a, a good fit for us. We reviewed the internal environment. We met with each and every department and sort of as a way to sort of re-engage our IT department with each of the customers that we serve, as well as to confirm and get an inventory of what systems they're using, what issues they may have, and what future technology needs they may be envisioning for efficiencies within their departments. We reviewed the, the city's vision, goals, and strategic plans. We wanted to make sure that ours sort of fit in line with the bigger picture of what we feel is best for the city. And we formulated the results, which is basically the, the document that is, that is before you. And the last step is we repeat the process on an annual basis. It's somewhat of a cyclical type process. We go through this every year, just to, or we will be doing this every year, just to make sure that as the, the technologies that change and the needs of the departments are somewhat dynamic, we, we stay in touch and we help, you know, just, we help our customers use the technology that they have or plan for those future needs. And the, the outcome, basically, we found that we have some, some major infrastructure that needs to be upgraded or replaced. Phone system is one of them. We have a outdated phone system, which is still functioning, but it's past its end of life, and we identified that as a opportunity for us to, to upgrade that. We have some servers and some storage that is also becoming end of life, so that is either in this year's capital budget or will be planned for future years. We have an enterprise software that, thanks to the feedback of our customers, which we received during those, those meetings, they say it's, it lacks features, and so, we've deemed it to be somewhat cumbersome. And it's the HDE system. It's used throughout the entire enterprise here, and like I said, it's cumbersome. It doesn't have reporting features. Several departments have expressed issues with using it and have even gone in other directions away from it, just because it doesn't, the system does not fit their, their business needs. So, that's somewhat of a concern for us. Some of the workflows that need to be evaluated within the departments, just looking for opportunities for efficiencies. We're working with some of the departments on some of their initiatives and just making sure that if there is a, a way to automate a process and evaluate that workflow, we're, we're there to provide some assistance. And looking for ways to enhance existing services. One of the ones that's on the agenda tonight is the IVR system. We identify that as a, a strategic need for several departments and will be presented to you for approval tonight. That's going to provide some tremendous benefits for the customer service department and help automate some of their processes, as well as down the road, it has the potential to help the development department through the automation of some of the permitting and approval type processes. And then finally, training and education needed for staff. It's, it's, it's great to have all of these different technologies within the enterprise, but we've found that, you know, several features are not being used, and either it's because they weren't, some of the staff were never trained on them, or new features have come out in previous release, or, you know, releases down the road, and we've just not taken advantage of it. So, education is, I guess, something that we just need to do a better job of, and we'll be identifying that as we move forward. So, basically, moving forward, the next steps, we're going to be replacing some of the critical infrastructure. We already have a project to replace our telephone system throughout the enterprise. We've also have some servers and some storage that will be coming to the commission for approval. We're evaluating some of the existing systems and workflows to help determine the cause of some of the issues. We're working to see if the HDE system that is deemed cumbersome, whether, you know, there's a way to, to fix what we have and use it a little more efficiently, or maybe we go in another direction, get another, another software to replace that, that system. I guess we'll be evaluating the business needs of some of those new systems as some of the departments have requested systems to create those efficiencies, as I mentioned, so IT will, will help them during that process. And then implement any, as many of the other recommendations of the, the report as we can, trying to take advantage of the opportunities there. And then finally, repeat the process. Meet with the upcoming, meet with the departments in the upcoming months and find out, you know, are things any better, any new technology needs coming up, and try to do that all before the, the budget process starts in March, April, and through the, the budget workshop cycle. So, and that basically concludes my brief presentation. I'll open it up for any of your questions or comments.
Commissioners, have any questions?
I have a question, John. Do you take care of the equipment for 911 emergency people?
I personally do not. The Police Department has a Technology Services Division that is responsible for supporting that specific business unit.
The Police Department IT is separate from?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Access to sensitive information and crime reporting information, they have to have certain certifications, which they have.
All right. We work, we collaborate on different systems, but whenever we can help, we, we offer it. But for the most part, that is supported by the Police Department's Technical Services Division.
But we do keep computers compatible and all that good stuff, in terms of same level?
Yes. We have the same goals in mind as to keep up with technology, make sure systems do not get too old and that we're replacing antiquated systems and providing the, the resources that the, the customers need.
We want, I just, oh, go ahead.
I just want to, have we started the move of the equipment over to Station Five, the emergency radio equipment?
The, there is a existing construction project that's underway right now. They're doing a build-out now. They need to modify some of the infrastructure over there, and walls are being modified, and those, those systems are being planned to be moved over there, and I believe it's in the upcoming months.
End of February. I think we should be finished somewhere, yeah, in the next two months.
Yeah.
If not, we'll talk Jeff. Blame Jeff.
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
In your report, your plan, I've heard some comments, and I think you've addressed most of them in your plan, so I'm, I'm happy to see that. The Wi-Fi in City Hall, is that operational now or is it in the future?
We, we have a limited deployment of Wi-Fi currently. You may be able to detect it within this, this area here and other areas within City Hall, the West Wing. It is not fully built out yet. We dabbled with that a little bit, just to sort of get started during some money that was available in the previous capital cycle. We do have additional 12 access points that are going to be deployed in probably the next three or four months at both City Hall and at some of the other municipal buildings.
And I heard a lot of, you know, But I understand why it'll take a long time to get a full report on what's needed.
And the opportunity to replace that is an expensive proposition.
Right, right.
Several hundreds, half a million or more.
Easy.
Thousands of dollars, yeah.
Plus training, which is where we always fall short, because we, it's always cut from the budget, so it's just, makes it difficult.
Yeah, we're in the process of researching that. And as I mentioned, you know, the grass may not always be greener. So we want to take the opportunity to look and see what the issues are, whether the system can do the things that our user community is saying that they're not available to do now. See if maybe there's a issue of changing workflows or taking advantage of features that are buried in the system and nobody is aware of. That goes back to the educational aspect that I mentioned. So it's a thorough analysis needs to be done. Because of that, because of the time that's involved, is the reason why we will likely have to renew our Navline agreement with Sun Guard and make it a shorter one, so that gives us a bit of time to do an evaluation and then maybe determine whether we stick with it or go in another direction.
I noticed the top staff have tablets, which I don't know too much about, because I don't have one myself, but they seem to use them quite frequently in our meetings and stuff. So how far down the road, or how far down the structure are you thinking about having people have tablets?
Carice Lejeune, Assistant City Manager. It's funny that you brought that up, because John and I were just discussing that in our staff meeting this morning. And I have not yet had the opportunity to speak with Lori about this, but this is something that we're hoping as we look at our cycle of PC replacements, deciding at some point whether laptops and other devices are going to be put into that PC replacement cycle. If department heads determine that it's more efficient for their staff to have a laptop or a updated laptop or a smart device, it's like an Android or an iPad, then we need to look at the budgeting of that. Will that be then a decision that the departments will make and put in their budget? Because it's a variable that is not stable, like the PC replacements. We know how many PCs there are in the city and how many we have to replace every year. So it's something that we are going to be looking into this year as part of ITS's strategic plan, to having discussions with the city manager and then bring forward at the next budget cycle, which we will be starting in March or April.
We've transitioned our building inspectors, they're on the iPad now out in the field. They were on a different type of a tablet. John, we're slowly, he's, we're slowly introducing more Mac products into the system, but we're a Microsoft-based system. And that does create, and we have many people that, including myself, that are using the iPads. It's not my primary computer, because it really does create compatibility issues with some of our softwares, so forth. We're not a Mac system, we're a Microsoft system. So that in of itself, with the introduction of the iPad is, has its own issues. But where we can, and if it's more efficient, it's a great opportunity to use the mobile devices.
I have one more comment. This, this projection screen here, my understanding is, it's like preloaded before the meetings and it can't be really changed during the meeting, like we couldn't add a picture or a graph, which we had found just prior to the meeting or something, or it'd be hard to change during the meeting. But sometimes, I mean, obviously, I would say it's on your list, it'd be a priority three, but sometime I'd like to see it. So if we were up here and we know something or find something, we could throw it up on the screen.
I'll take that into consideration.
Mr. Merker?
Yeah, well, this is the new iPad. I just picked it up yesterday, the air. And through your knowledge and Jeff's knowledge, which I'm learning a little, yeah, it works real well. But I'm guessing, I'm assuming in a couple of years, that it will be that compatible with the software that's needed. I mean, help me on this, you two, that it's that close already, however. But it's a wonderful device, and I hope that...
We are also at the mercy of the software developers. And Sun Guard, who runs our enterprise system, has some very specific requirements for the versions of Java and things like that that they run. So sometimes it's not because of the iPad, but it's because of the software manufacturer themselves, and it's just not compatible with that type of device. So...
Okay. Want to thank you and your staff for the work on your strategic plan. I think it's really important. Your technical expertise affects every department in this city, so there are a lot of people count on you, and we thank you for all your work and your effort.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, it takes us, oh, is there a motion to approve item E?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Takes the item H. And I believe we had a person in the audience wanting to address item H, which is?
Dave Cat, 67, Midwood Lane, Boynton Beach. Regrettably, this item was on the consent agenda, so if I were to imagine something, it's probably been pretty well decided upon. But hopefully, maybe I can sway your mind otherwise. To have somebody who doesn't live in the city be paid at $100 an hour in these times to look at our, you know, code reduction hearings when, when through these years, there's been code reduction hearings done by the residents of this city, pretty well satisfactorily. I remember when I was on the commission, I can't think of five times when somebody came up and appealed what the code board had done. That's in over a two-year period, which I think is a pretty good record of the residents of this city. And they work well with staff, they understand when people are trying to sashay around something or when they're not telling the truth, when they are. And I think giving this to a private party is a, is a big, big, big mistake. I think we should keep the co-compliance board doing what they do, and what they do is they do it well. And to give it to a private party who has no familiarity with this city whatsoever is a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here at George 248 Main Boulevard. I echo what Mr. Cat said, because I served on that code board for three and a half years. And to say that the judgment of one person who does not live or work in the city is better than five or seven citizens that live and work in the city, many of which have lived their entire lives, our chairperson of the code board has been the chairperson for many, many years. She was born and raised in this city. She went to high school with Commissioner Crusell, I mean, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. And they do an excellent job. And they have legal advice assigned to that board. Attorney Tulsa served for many years as legal advice to that board. And I just think it's wrong to be paying for something that you have volunteers already qualified to do, and many of them with great years of experience, and who understand the neighborhoods and understand the history. To go this route, I just, I find it really wrong. And so I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Blast, 113 West Attar Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I emphatically agree with David and the other speaker. I think we should have kind of the Monroe Doctrine for Boynton, keep decisions about Boynton within Boynton. I repeat, that's our Monroe Doctrine. Some of you know history, and this will strengthen our city. It really is not a good idea. And I hope we, you will, the pride in our city will prevent you from moving that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments for the Christian?
I'd just like to say that this was presented to me, that this is going to kind of speed up the process. It'll take out the emotion, if you will, of these deciding on who's, who's going to pay and who isn't going to pay. And I agree with the speakers that, you know, if we could leave it in the hands of the citizens and take that emotion out of the decision-making, it'd be a better process. But I can speak from experience in the short time that I've been sitting up here, is that we've had at least six, if not eight, cases come before the commission here on lean reductions. Now, not knowing all the details of what transpired to get to that point, it's kind of an uncomfortable position for me. By bringing in somebody who is unbiased and legally astute, it will speed up the process, we'll be able to hear more cases, take all the emotion out of whatever decision that is made. And I think in the end, it'll save time, money, and it'll take it out of the commission's hands as making those decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Okay, I pulled item I and J. I'm going to talk about both of them together, because they're basically the bargaining agreements between the blue collar and white collar workers. The reason I pulled it is I just want to comment that I think the commission kind of bit the bullet and went out, because a lot of the workers in the city had not received a pay increase for some, like three to four years. And we felt like, what could we do to try and rectify that? So we kind of bit the bullet and raised the millage rate in the city, so that we'd have a little money, so that we could give them some kind of an increase to show them what we appreciated their work. And therefore, what we were able to come up with was about a 3% increase, which is not huge, but at least it says we're trying. We're trying to, we recognize the work that these people do in this, in this city, and we're trying our best to try and compensate you as best we can. And I appreciate the white collar workers and the blue collar worker unions working with us and accepting this 3% proposal. I just wanted to express my appreciation for them, working with the city and knowing that we're trying to do the best we can to reward them. So that's all, I just want to make those comments. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number R14-005.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Is there a motion on Resolutions R106?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Item K was added, the red light, Resolution R14-009. City Attorney, do you want to read that or make any comment on that one?
If I might, I think it was added to the consent agenda and was already approved.
Okay, we approved it.
When you approved the consent agenda originally.
That's right. Sorry. You're absolutely right. Okay, that takes us to bids and purchase over $100,000, opposed Resolution Number 14-007. Approve and authorize the city manager to execute a contract and related documents between the city Boynton Beach and Selection Technologies, Inc. of Portland, Oregon, for hosted services for an interactive voice response IVR system and web inter-service for not to exceed amount of $300,000 as a result of RFP 0512825-13.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Takes us down to unfinished business. Approve the denim to the city manager's appointment agreement based on city commission discussion at December 17, 2013 city commission meeting. You were all handed out a little backup on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I provided at each of your desks a, an excerpt from the contract, which provides for the revised language to the city manager's agreement.
Yes, I have that.
And that should clarify...
Any questions?
I do. So as we vote on this, that new language will lead into this, into this contract?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's kind of what you brought up way back. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. I believe that is all the business come before the commission. I just want to make one other quick announcement, for those who might be interested. The Chamber of Commerce monthly luncheon is this Wednesday at Ben Venuto's. Usually starts around 11:30. Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Anybody interested to attend that? Just wanted to let you know that was coming up. Hearing no other business to come forward to commission. We stand adjourned.